Good evening. Welcome to the August 20th and the Grafton Planning Board. This meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted entirely remotely pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the Governor's March 15, 2020 order included imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may get their place. I will call the role of the members and staff. And Chris is going to help us with the other people who are present, who are present to ensure that we can hear you. Please be sure to be unmuted when you respond. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as well as being broadcast live on the Grafton Television Government Chime. Participation by the public or public comment agenda item and the public hearings will be via the Zoom QA feature unless we make raise hand work and then we'll figure that one out. Please include your name and address and your comments or questions will be read and responded to an appropriate point in the proceeding. If we, if we can get indication people want to speak, I think we're working on making that work. Each vote will be taken by roll call. Okay, the, the members, David?
Present.
Justin?
Present.
Linda?
Present.
Bravu?
Present.
Vikram? Vikram? I can't hear you.
Can you hear me, sorry?
Yeah, that works.
Present.
And let's see, we have Chris?
Present.
Yes, and Natalie?
I'm not sure if I saw her on there.
I don't see her.
No, I don't. I'll resend the invite.
Who else do we need to touch base with?
I believe that's it.
Okay, first item, public input. This is where if we had some public that wanted to talk about something that's not on the agenda already, they'd have a chance to speak. Is, I don't think we have any, do we? Apparently not. All right, first item, appoint a representative to the town administrator screening committee. We have part of the charter. We have to, but we're one of several bodies that have to appoint, delegate to that. I did this the last time around. I was chair then too, as a matter of fact. So, I'm interested in being appointed. Who else?
As I said last time, I am and Bravu has signaled his interest.
Yes.
And I'm also willing to, but I, I think, yeah, I'm willing to defer it, given the number of people.
Well?
How do you want to do this? Someone make a motion to nominate somebody?
We got three, we got three candidates, why don't we just go through and see who each person would like? Linda?
Why don't you call me last?
Who, who else wants to be last too? You know, I can make you all last.
Nothing like putting you on the spot, Linda.
All right.
If I'm, if I may?
Yes.
What might help some of us anyway is, at least for the three of you still in the running, maybe one sentence, you know, a quick sentence on what, like on what you think you'll bring to making the selection, like what you're, what you would be looking for?
Okay, okay. Bravu?
Sure. I'll probably make it in two sentences, but that's a very good idea, Justin, I, thank you. So my, my thought was I, as a background, I have been involved in more than thousand plus opportunities of hiring, recruiting in my career, thousand plus in the last 20 years. Many have been my direct reports, some have been my peers. I have also been involved in hiring my own direct managers. And then the last one was hiring people who are working across teams. I'm in IT, there were folks in the business side, so I bring in a lot of experience, that was one. Second, as a, as outside of work in my prior job, prior role at in Amherst as part of the condo association, we had to hire a property manager or replace a property manager. So that's not exactly the same, it's equivalent hundred odd units. So I was the board member, the HOA member, and I was very, very actively involved in hiring the property manager. I said two sentences, I'll make one last point. I personally feel that this is a very important role, I know everyone agrees this is a very important role. And what I'm looking for is the thesis, the character, the capability and the commitment. I hadn't had a lot of opportunity to interact with our prior town administrator. And I do want to make sure that even I do, if I do have an opportunity, I look for candidate who can fill in all these categories of good character, good capability and commitment, willing to work across and leave rest of it focused on the administration. So that in a nutshell is why I wanted to see if there's an opportunity for me to be in the screening committee.
Hey.
Thank you.
Hey.
Okay, so, but to keep it brief, you know, seeing as how this is a screening committee and not a hiring committee, I think it's particularly important for the screening committee members, or at least some of us, to, to bring a pre-broad and long background in the various acts of aspects of town government, which will help us to look at the potential candidates and, and get a pretty good sense of how they, how they're likely to fit. You know, I've been involved in town government in many ways over the years since the late eighties on Conservation Commission, worked on a couple of different major bylaw changes, wetlands, water supply protection, community preservation. Obviously, I've been on this board, planning board for a number of years. I've also done a lot of work with finance committee members and various other groups and committees. I think I have a pretty broad and fairly comprehensive understanding of a lot of aspects of town government, which I think is going to be very important in evaluating the candidates that we will ultimately be forwarding to the select board for their final hiring decision.
I could say many of the same things Dave's saying. I've worked closely, I've been on the planning board and worked closely with every one of our town administrators, all the way back to Dan Morgado, watched and worked closely with the planning board, other appointed committees. All right, you know, everything Dave says is important. I think that the most, I think it's very important to have an understanding, a broad understanding of our town government, how it functions, how the people interact. That, that said also, if we have to choose, it seems maybe the chair of the board is the best one. Okay.
Can I give a opinion on this?
Nah, we open to Congress. Can you hear Linda?
Can you all hear?
She's on mute. Yes.
Okay.
I, I can, yeah.
Wait, whoa, whoa. What, Justin?
I was just gonna say it's a little soft, but I can still hear.
Yeah, she's using my microphone.
Trying. I, um, I really don't have a strong feeling one way or another of who goes on it. I would say, nothing against you, Bravu, but it really needs to be between Dave and Bob because both of them go long ways back. They have a real understanding, both of them, of the interactions of the job of the town administrator with the town. And, um, as Bob said, you know, we were here when Dan Morgado was here, the very first administrator this town hired. And unfortunately, he is a, he's a hard act to follow. Let's put it that way. He was by far, far and away, the best town administrator we ever had. And Shrewsbury knows that too, because they scooped him up. And, you know, I've seen every one of them since then, I've seen their strengths, I've seen their weaknesses. Um, and having someone come in or having, you know, being able to look at the candidates that we get and being able to, you know, it's a crap shoot, I hate to say it, but I've hired lots of people. And you never completely know if they're going to work out. You have, you, you think you're reading it well, but you just don't know. But I, I think that both Dave and Bob have a really good handle on how this town views itself, not just the job of the administrator, but how the town views itself overall. And I think that's important in the consideration, you know, that we want to emphasize looking for someone who's going to be compatible in the way the view town, this town really feels and how we want it to grow. Like this is a really crucial time for us. Forget COVID, I'm not talking about that, but we need to grow the business and we need to grow, you know, we need definitely some active things going on, but we also need people who will work with the other boards and with the whole town. And, you know, other than that, everyone on this board is pretty darn smart. And everyone on this board has a pretty good idea of what makes, you know, good leadership. I don't think any of us are naive about that. Um, so quite frankly, I don't care. I think any one of us would be a good choice. So, you know, flip coin. And I may pass on voting.
Well, we have to have.
I know.
Ultimately, we do have to make a decision here.
Yeah. Okay.
Do, do we take a majority of a quorum and then not counting people passing or, anyway? Okay, Linda asked to be the last. Oh, uh, Bravu?
I vote for myself.
Hmm?
No, I don't, is the question, whom do I vote for or?
No, no, no.
You vote.
Who do you vote for?
For myself.
For yourself?
Yes. That's one thing I can do for myself. I agree with Linda though, I, I do agree with Linda. So I, I have a lot of respect for you guys.
But you're voting for you.
Yes, I'm voting for myself.
Justin?
It's a toss up for me between Dave and Bob, I think I'm gonna go with Dave for, you know, by a slight, by a various hair, so to speak.
I don't, I don't think Vikram gets a vote on this. Linda?
Just because it's an end of the time, it's just an end of the time. I'm sorry, dear, you're not gonna speak to me for day, I'm gonna vote.
I think Dave voted for himself.
David definitely voted for himself.
I vote for Dave.
Yeah, I just don't want it to go on.
Dave, congratulations, Dave, it's, I, I think, I think the screening committees powers were brought back a bit after Tim's appointment. The selectmen had more flexibility than they did, if I'm not mistaken. That was a long time ago though.
Yes, I, I'm not quite sure the selectmen discussed the charge of the screening committee last week and I don't remember them nailing it down quite. They, they will be, they will be taking up the topic again tomorrow night. Among other things, they will be looking at selecting a consultant to assist the screening committee. And other members of the screening committee have yet to be appointed, but we'll, we'll move forward to this and I hope I will do an adequate job representing the interest of this board and as well as the interest of the town as in general.
Yeah, I'd like you to try to be sure we get someone who will consult the planning board when appointing planners.
Ah, yes.
That's the only time it's not been done with planning.
Yeah, I, I think a town administrator who respects the boards would be very valuable.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed. And that, that particular item has stuck in my mind ever since.
Yes.
Not, not to denigrate Chris, who has been doing, I think, an excellent job so far, and I have no reason to doubt that he will continue, but yes, in the past, the, the board has always been involved in that process, much more than they were this time around. We could hope that we won't be facing that situation again anytime soon. You can stick with us for a while, Chris.
That's planned.
But, but it's more than, it's, it's, um, there's a general, uh, it's last time around, there was a general disregard of many of our boards or?
Okay, well, I think we.
Okay, and, and I, I want to, I want a administrator who doesn't have that, that understand, that respects the way Dan Morgado did. Even just because you can, doesn't mean you should in certain cases. He, he knew enough to involve the library trustees, even though he knew he didn't have to when a librarian was being appointed for example.
If I may.
That would have been very unblocking.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that we move to the next agenda and if anyone on this board has a particular trait they desire that they think Dave may not already be considering, they can email Dave for that, you know, consideration as well.
I, I think it's not beyond us to talk about it though, as a board, since he's, since he's representing us. In any case, I think we've beaten it up pretty well.
Yeah.
Let someone has, oh, by the way, I didn't declare that Dave did get elected.
That makes it official.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Where's my gavel?
We should have, Zoom should provide a virtual gavel somehow.
Yeah, well, the guy, the guy with the mute button over there, he's got the power. Okay, moving on. Recommendation to the Select Board Notice of Intent 93 North Street. Didn't we do this?
So we, we had an A and R for the 93 North Street, so this is for the notice of intent. I know the applicant is here with, to give some presentation, I'll pull up the actual plans and the, the notice. We are, we do currently have a draft purchase and sale. We don't have a finalized one, but I do note that the Conservation and Assessors have both recommended not to exercise the town's right of first refusal on this notice of intent. So, not that that necessarily has bearing on your decision, but.
Yeah, well, do we have a dollar figure?
So, hi, okay, Chris?
Uh, no, I, I don't believe.
Yeah. This is Deb Holden Engvall and I can further elaborate a little bit on this. So you folks approved the A and R lot in, on, in July. And basically what we did is we carved out 59,271 foot square lot. So basically, we're only requesting 19,271 square feet to be, that you're voting on. The whole house lot has sold for 278,000, but only 40,000 square feet of that is already being taxed at the regular residential rate. So we're only talking 19,271 square feet. The remaining land of almost 17 acres, we're donating to the town of Grafton. I think you folks might remember that was brought up at the town meeting and the citizens voted to accept the donation. So basically, alls we're doing is, is making a house lot out of the remaining land. And I think that we would be, it would be very difficult for us to make a 40,000 square foot lot, so we would be coming to you regardless because, because of the wetlands and the setbacks and everything, I think it would be very difficult for us to make a conforming lot that's 40,000 square feet, given the wetlands there. So basically, we're just asking for the 19,271 square feet for you folks to, I guess, recommend not purchasing. So it's hard to say the amount there, Mr. Chairman, when you ask, because it's a house lot and 40,000 square feet of that is already considered residential use.
Yeah, I, I guess, I ask because normally, one of the questions we want to know is, how much money were you talking about? Uh, you know, maybe it's a bargain, maybe it's not a bargain. In this case, it's much too complicated to figure out.
Yeah.
Anybody with questions or anything? If not, do we have a motion?
I move that we make a recommendation of not to purchase on this lot for the select board.
Second? Who seconded? Bravu? I see Natalie appeared. Natalie, can you hear us? You need to unmute to tell us.
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. One of my jobs. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. David?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Bravu?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, I sure appreciate it. And we will have a formalized purchase and sales agreement once we go to the select board because we know that they need to have the formalized notice of intent, but we appreciate your, your voting that and looking forward to getting the land donated to the town of Grafton.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, we're all looking forward to that, I think.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm missing something. Okay. Mill, wait a minute, let me check. All right, well, Mill redevelopment overlay district, anything new?
Yeah, so where we left off on that, we had discussed, CMR PC had given some kind of updates on that and some, some analysis. And our, the board's comments were that it looked at redevelopment of existing mill sites into, you know, residential or other types of uses, but not actual preservation of the industrial use. So I still need to, to work with CMR PC to kind of come up with recommendations to that regard. As of right now, I don't have an update on that, but I'll continue to, to work with them to get a more formalized update to their analysis in terms of the actual industrial use.
Okay, so, nothing more tonight?
Correct.
Subdivision rules and regulations?
Uh, in terms of that, so I did, where we left off on that, I apologize, I hadn't forwarded Graves Engineering's comment letters. So those are now included in the record for the board to review. I also note in doing compliance work for our MS4 stormwater permit, it was noted that a recent report before my time, and I believe it was 2016, there was a low impact development study that had a lot of kind of commentary of subdivision regulations that could be included in those updates. So I did also add those for the board to review and familiarize. I'm still going through those myself, but, and getting familiarized, but I did include those and so I'm happy to discuss with the board if they'd like to, any aspect of that.
Anything.
Yeah, I had, I had identified the LID study as one of the number of studies that had, had items that are likely to, that should be considered when we're updating subdivision rules. And I, I remember that Jeff Walsh, in discussing two weeks ago, said, you know, he said something along the lines of LID is kind of a nice idea, but there are some aspects of it that may not be as practical or as, as workable as they like to think. But I did kind of itemize a number of, a number of items out of the LID study that could be considered for subdivision rules. And in fact, let me just see, those are, those are actually listed out in one of the documents that's online under this topic. So in addition to, I think I certainly recommend everybody to review the LID study and the others and re-review the notes I sent around on that. And, you know, we were kind of getting to the point of this where we, you know, we, we need to sort of go through these and start to, you know, really start to nail down what we want to include or what we want to seriously consider. And there, over the years, a lot of recommendations have been made by LID and various other plans. And so there's quite a collection of ideas that people come up with over, for, over the years. And at some point, we're going to actually have to nail that down and, and, and really start doing the work. It kind of in connection with that, with a lot of Jeff's comments, a lot of little details he's mentioned, various wording changes and so on, and various things I've mentioned, distributed to the, to the board as well as made notes myself and haven't really circulated them yet. It's probably about time we started editing a copy of the subdivision rules, you know, so we can sort of get everything, get, get everything collected, written down with chain of tracks on, so we can see what changes are being made. And I'd, I'd be more, more than happy if, if you can furnish me with a copy of the Word document for the SRR, I, I can begin making those edits rather than just listing them out in other documents. You know, they're, they're starting to come in from several different places. We, we, you know, assuming we actually want to get this done, you know, we're gonna have to nail down, there's some, some larger topics we're gonna have to work on. If we, if we can been, begin actually collecting everything into a document, I think that would help us along.
Yeah, I can definitely send that Word document over. I think, and I think you're right, I think hearing that, maybe a good way to, to look at it is we can chip away at those comments in-house as we come up with them. And then in the meantime, I don't know if the board would like, I can review if there's any grants or other types of funding sources that might be able to be tapped to hire a consultant for a larger overhaul. I don't know if that's, that's something the board would want to consider, if it's, if there are grant funding sources, but I can take a look into that and see if, obviously any work we do will just get that underway. But that might be able to take it a bit further if we needed to.
Note that we don't absolutely have to hit any particular date to do this. We don't actually have to do it all in one move. All we have to do is have a majority vote of the board, if I'm not mistaken, to change any rule. So we can be doing some, you know, get the low, low hanging fruit and work by other means for the others. If, I wouldn't mind hearing about help, but we've got a pretty good list on it.
It, it would be interesting to know whether there was some grant funding available for potential overhaul or revision issues that, that might be, that we could usefully use some outside help on. There may or may not be any, as, as Bob just pointed out, it's, this isn't quite the same as revising the zoning bylaw where we have to plan around town meeting schedules. We can revise the subdivision rules and regulations really as often as we feel we need to. You know, it's a fairly, you know, the board does need to hold a public hearing. Ultimately, it's simply a vote of the board to adopt the revised rules, file them with the town clerk, at which point they become effective. Ultimately, it's simply a vote of the board to adopt the revised rules, file them with the town clerk, at which point they become effective. And yes, we could do it, we could easily take and collect a bunch of small stuff and make that one revision. You know, a bunch of little things that all taken all together are quite non-controversial and not difficult to tackle. And we can, you know, we can tackle some of the more substantive issues, you know, maybe one by one, or however we end up deciding to do it. Right now, there's a, it was a long list of things that I, you know, worked on somewhere. Really, I haven't done as much on it lately, been, you know, distracted by other things. But ultimately, I I want to get back and kind of boil all that down and 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 identify some major topics for us to really focus on, one by one, things like the dead end streets and the intersection separation. And a number of other things, I think, some of the other recommendations that came out of previous plans and studies.
Anything else on this for now? Okay, I think we have our direction on that for now. Brings us to time for hearings. We'll take up items four and five after we do the hearings. We have MRSP twenty twenty dash three, eighteen Carroll Road special permit. And we also have definitive print DP twenty twenty dash one on twenty Carroll Road. And unless it complicates things, we'll try to do both at one time, if that's all right. Chris, what's what's new?
Yeah, so I think, at least for the discussion, we can we can have this together. I do note that we do have the the draft decisions and and those will have to be done separately as there are some considerations between the two. Where we left this off, we were looking for a waiver request for the easement, the future easement of a future road to be laid out, the the requirement of dead end roads typically require that to be laid out. In this case, as was passed in the previous iteration of this decision, the wetlands to the rear of the property in the town-owned parcel really preclude future development in any meaningful way, and access to that parcel would likely be done from other areas. So that was the the waiver request that we were waiting for in this case.
So.
And then and then the, sorry, the other part that we were looking for was between the flexible and conventional, typically the board indicates one way or the other, and the request did come in for the conventional subdivision to be pursued.
Yeah, as as we discussed last time, that was basically crossing the i's and dotting the t's or whatever they do with them. That that request had to be in before the close of the public hearing, and that has been that has been done.
Yep.
And really, those are the only two things we were waiting for before we closed the public hearing. As I recall, the draft decisions were largely written on the assumption that those that the waiver request would come in and that the applicant selection of plan would come in.
Yeah, I did try to leave a little bit of flexibility in the writing of those to allow it to go either way, but correct that they were largely looking at the that waiver request being included. I'd be happy to pull those up if the board wants to go through those draft decisions rather than the plans.
But let's, we ought to complete the hearings.
Absolutely.
At least complete this hearing before acting on this hearing. Is there, does anyone have anything more to contribute to the public hearing?
On the assumption that we have received all the necessary information, there are no outstanding issues remaining to be resolved. I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and second. Linda, I think I heard.
Yes.
Discussion on closing the hearing. Hearing none, all in favor. Oh, no. I'm gonna have to call the governor and see if I can make a change in this rule.
Old habits die hard.
Maybe the lieutenant governor, you know, she's closer to us.
Yeah.
David?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Rabu?
Hi.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Hearing is closed. Now, shall we move on to the decision for this one?
Yes, so there's two decisions, I don't know whether the pleasure of the board to do the major residential first or the definitive subdivision. The way they kind of reference each other, I might recommend that the MRSP be the first, but I don't know if the board has any kind of.
Just for clarity, the motion was intended to close both hearings, correct?
That was my understanding.
Since I'm one who made the motion, I wasn't really thinking one way or the other.
Why why don't, why why don't you? I think that closed the first one. Why don't you make another motion?
All right, so the motion closes. So I will now move that we close the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan.
Second.
Moving in second. No discussion? David?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Rabu?
Hi.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Both hearings are closed. Now, yeah, I I was, I had a little trouble with the decisions. I didn't know what green and yellow or orange and all.
Yeah.
So I was having a little trouble following some of it, but you're going to help us as we go through this, aren't you?
Absolutely, yeah. So so apologize for the colorful, it's more to keep me organized.
We'll we'll take the one first that you recommend.
Okay, yep. So this will be for the major residential special permit. Actually, let me do a screen share. So again, I left a placeholder for exhibits. I'll have to update that with just the additional waiver requests that came in.
If we're supposed to look at that, you better make it bigger.
Is that more legible?
Barely on my screen. Big screen. There we go. Everybody else happy?
Yeah, so I did leave a placeholder for the exhibits. I'll have to update that with the additional waiver requests and the items that came in. I'll I'll update our meeting of the August tenth to, obviously, the August twenty fourth, if the board were to make a vote on the findings and decision tonight. So the green here, so my recommendation would be to keep this. So this is kind of part of that discussion of how the major residential special permit references the definitive subdivision decision. This line, I kept it consistent with the previous iteration of this plan. It essentially says that there's no waivers from the rules and regulations as part of the major residential special permit. As those are included in the definitive plan. So the waiver request that we did receive again kind of noted in the green below is, again, that's going to be referenced in the definitive plan decision to come next.
This is a special perm, right?
Correct.
Right. And you, but what you've got green is no waivers from rules and regulations as part of this application.
The special permit.
Oh, okay. Well, you wouldn't ask for waivers of I don't think we've ever waived a rule or regulation in a special permit, only they they apply to. I don't know.
Yeah, so so this is consistent with the previous, and I just I wanted to call, I wanted to call the board's attention to it in case they felt differently on this go around.
Okay.
Another thing that was included in the previous that the board and the applicant may wish to discuss is that the applicant previously had stated that they would work with the Grafton Department of Public Works to develop a plan to improve sightlines. So I don't know if the the applicant has any indication one way or the other in terms of that, but that is consistent from the previous decision.
Did I miss? Did I miss, Chris? Do we have a reference to the previous approval in terms of just a decision number or something in here?
Uh, yes, I do believe it's in the very beginning, I do reference that. Let me just double check. So no, I did not.
Because without that in this document, I think it's hard to say anything about a previous approval if we don't reference what a previous approval was.
Yeah, so. If, yes, exactly. If we're talking about a previous approval, as in F eleven, for example. There needs to be some sort of a reference, you know, some sort of an explanation of what that previous approval is. It should be an exhibit if nothing else.
So I mean, I could I could reference the recorded decision in that finding rather than saying the applicant stated. I could have included as as noted in the previous decision, if the board would be amenable to that.
It's it's probably worth mentioning in the the background section as briefly as possible, the the history of the project with the previous approval. I know that we've we've had the occasional project that's kind of followed a similar path where it was, there was a previous application and it was disposed of either by approval or some other means. And the in in the in the later, the later application in the background, we at least briefly mention the history of the project to the extent that it's relevant to the current. And in this case here, that previous approval is, we've made that relevant by mentioning it in the findings. So it, the in the background is a kind of a good place to put just the general description of that, maybe with a reference to the you know, where the approval can be found at the registry of deeds.
Understood. Yeah, I can include that.
Yeah, I don't think we necessarily need to have it as an exhibit because the existence of the prior approval does not affect what we vote on over this decision. But since it's referencing it in the findings, yeah, I think we need to have it in the background at least.
So so that would be similar to the second highlighting, finding twelve. I think, having been provided the information at this point, I think we could change this to that sufficient material was provided to maintain that the abutting property was not developable, as that seems to be the discussion from the board.
Yeah, and I think you can word that in such a way as to basically point, point to the definitive approval for further detail. Yeah, this was written sort of as that was going to happen in the future, and now it's happened, so you can write it as though it hasn't.
Yep. And then again, finding thirteen, that now is has been satisfied, I believe, by the submission of the letter indicating the conventional development plan would be pursued.
So that would become a reference to the exhibit.
Correct. So the other thing that to note here, the previously, the board noted that the applicant should seek to establish lots to maximize the practical amount of distance between any proposed dwellings in the wetlands. I don't know if the board still feels that way or would like to change that. Again, just another another item for the board to consider from from the previous.
Well.
Did the board at any point during the proceedings in this public hearing, in fact, note that the applicant shouldn't seek to establish lots, et cetera?
So I don't believe that was part of the discussion in this particular hearing.
But if we're carrying forward from before.
Over, the the board could still have it as a finding as they're discussing it today.
Yeah, this is, you know, that's another one. We can word that as a as a reference back to the previous plan, previously approved. Or the previous approval, put it that way, whatever. You can word it Smith.
Yep. So again, the green is just noting the waiver. So it's a similarly similar to the other ones, just kind of commenting on the waiver and that those are part of the definitive. Yep, so.
With F nineteen. Is the waiver not in this one? Yeah, you have an exhibit nineteen.
Right. So this, so this is the special permit. And and again, so the waiver previously, the the previous version of the special permit indicated that the I mean, this language is right from that, so it's indicating that the definitive subdivision is the one that includes the waiver. And when we get to that decision, there'll be more of the kind of commentary on on the actual waiver for the easement. But again, that's why I highlighted it just to to call some attention if the board wanted to reference it differently this go around.
Why did we end up having these as two separate? You know, normally, we don't have some of this trouble because we're doing us basically a single decision. Aren't we? We're doing a preliminary, but.
Right. Normally, the MRSP and the preliminary are done together, and the definitive follows later. So in this case here, we're we're, this is an unusual situation because we're redoing, essentially, we're redoing the MRSP, and then concurrently, we're doing the definitive, which those two are normally separated in time.
Yeah, I should just not mention what I just thought of. One of the requirements for a definitive is a preliminary, isn't it?
It is.
Within a certain number of months.
Correct. Yeah, so there there was a previous preliminary that was approved.
How long ago?
I'd have to double check. I don't remember.
What weeks?
I'm not absolutely certain, but I'm pretty sure I ran across something not long ago that basically indicated that you 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 could do a definitive without first doing a preliminary. I'd have to look that up to be sure, but I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Yeah, so we do have a application that is allows for definitive plan without preliminary plan. So typically, those incur additional fees. But that is an option.
Okay. My. So. What else here?
And so the the remainder of these, I believe, are really just between conventional and flexible, which, again, we're going with the conventional per the indication of the board and the applicant. Per the indication of the board and the applicant. And then this was again, the um, in terms of the sightlines um. Of the intersection with uh, Carroll Road.
Under, under thirty-three, shouldn't we already know? The votes?
We did take that vote last meeting, I think, didn't we?
And, and that's why we got a, a letter.
Yeah, so this, but I mean, you know, what, Chris has not revised this. This is, this is as it was drafted. Yeah, or the meeting two weeks ago, and it's not been revised since the actions at that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would fill those in. And then. The decision and the conditions. So again, this was the um, a condition from the previous decision that was indicating that uh. The board was um, recommending that they be. Configured in a, in a manner that is uh. As much distant from the wetlands as possible. Condition four is essentially going to be. Satisfied already, but again, this is, that's how the previous decision was written. Um, the board could. Have it stricken at their uh, pleasure, or we can keep it included.
Uh, condition four looks, looks right to me as a part of the MRSP. Basically says, yeah, the applicant will, will take care of this with the, with the definitive. And that's all, you know, that's all again, looking forward to what's going to be, how that's going to be dealt within the definitive plan.
So again, this is a conventional. And so those are the kind of outstanding items for discussion. So I think the board has indicated. Uh, at least piecemeal what their um, on many of those are, but I'm happy to, to discuss further. Really however the board wants to proceed on that um, draft decision. I can also bring up the other one if we want to review that beforehand, before voting on either one. This is the special permit, so I can, I can pull up the definitive.
Are we gonna be okay with? Voting tonight when we don't actually have all the exact words? Is anyone going to object to that?
I think probably as, as, as we have done occasionally in the past, where, you know, where. Provided that we're all pretty comfortable with what we believe we've agreed to in terms of the changes that are going to be made. We could, we could vote to approve this subject to. You know, review by the chair or other, or designate to make sure that the final wording is consistent with what we discussed at the meeting.
I'd be comfortable with that. I would say, I would, I would be comfortable with that.
I think I'm okay with it. Anybody not comfortable with it? Bravo? Linda?
No.
Okay. Uh, okay, let's uh, let's do that. I thi- I think Dave does a better job than I do on that. By the way. That, but make sure it's okay.
Make more work for me, huh? Good thing I'm retired and I have some time available during the day.
Yeah, well, a good job done. Not sure I'd do as good as you.
Whatever.
Yes.
So would we like to dispose of this?
I, I think we can unless someone thinks there's going to be a crossback.
I'll make the motion that we approve the. Major residence special permit for Abbey, you know, for three Abbey Woods. With the modifications that's discussed with having David Robbins give a final review and. Approval that it is meeting our changes as we expect.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Hearing none. David?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Bravo?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Moving on, special permit. And resident, the other one.
The definitive, correct. Sorry, I'm just going to have to let it reflect.
So here again, I'll suggest sort of upfront that included in the background and this similar to what we just talked about for the. Special permit that we, you know, you know, include a little bit of background information on the previous approval. There was a previous definitive approval, correct?
Uh, correct, there was.
Yeah. Yeah, so for consistency, let's, let's mention that here in the same way that we discussed for the special permit.
Um, so again, very, very much the same case, the, I left the exhibits a little bit. Uh, open here, I'll include the, the remaining waiver requests that did come in.
Can you blow up again?
Oh, sorry. I've got a big screen over here.
Yeah, well, I want to. All the way across my big screen.
Yes. Right, um.
Bob doesn't want to look at this like he would be looking at it on his iPhone.
Well, see, I'm sitting. That far away.
I forget that it displays differently on the, on the Zoom for you guys. Yeah, so um, finding five here is uh, in terms to the, this is um, the waiver where it actually references the waiver. For the dead end streets. Again, showing the, the easement for the dead end street to a de- adjacent property. And so the, this is where the board would find that no waivers from the rules and regulations were granted as part of the special permit.
I'll make an observational note. We got finding nine, then finding one, then finding ten.
Sorry, there's a formatting error.
Yeah.
I'll address that.
Just an observational note.
Thank you.
Microsoft Word can be so helpful, can't it?
Yeah, so this was um. Language from the previous decision, again, um, discussing the easement um. And referring back to those uh. Kind of configurations. So I don't know if the board had wanted to include that language as it was, or if there's um, adjustments that they wanted to make. To that language. I believe in this case, so finding eleven, um, I think we could remove that as, uh, we're showing in our opinion now that. If the board finds that, that they have shown enough. In terms of the easement.
To an extent, we sort of covered number eleven in the meeting by just discussing the fact that they did do that investigation. To an extent, but so I don't think there's a harm in leaving it in.
Yeah, it was just, at the, the previous uh, hearing, it was discussed uh, quite at length. But again, just wanted the, the board to, to be aware of it and. So then this is um. Finding twelve um, and references the conditions. Um, so again, we're kind of cross, cross, cross referencing each other. Um, I will include the, this is where I. Had meant to include the reference to the previous uh, definitive plan decision. I, I have not included the. Deed book and page, but I will add that. But again, just as, this is just referencing the previous decision and the conditions there. And the board didn't, the applicant didn't see the way we request, sorry.
In item either down at the bottom of the page. I would expect that to be referencing the. Major residence special permit that we just now approved. Uh, again, the normal sequence would be that special permit is done and recorded. And then the definitive plan is developed, so the definitive plan could reference back to the uh, the, the. Recent special permit. Case here, there's a, you know, that, that would, you know, this, this language would be referring to where the. Where the new special permit has been recorded.
Correct.
And which, which either means we don't, you know, we, we, we delay this decision until that recording has happened or we uh. Reference it some other way, because it does, it obviously has to be recorded and we have to have a reference to it. I'm not quite sure how best to handle that off the top of my head.
I- is there a need to wait the waiting period before recording? And I think recording sometimes happens quite a while. Uh, after we finish, but.
Yeah, nor- normally a special permit is not recorded until the appeal period has lapsed because the. Included with the recording of the special permit is a certification from the town clerk. That the appeal period has passed without an appeal. Or if the thing did get appealed, then there's a different way of, of documenting that the appeal has been resolved before it's been recorded.
Yep, so it's a twenty. So it's the twenty day appeal period. The board could um. I mean, I guess the board could say that administratively, the, the deed book and page would be added after that. Appeal period and then we could, and then finally file the um. Definitive plan with that reference, and then now it would start the twenty day appeal period for that definitive plan. The other, the other way to, to do it would be to, to hold off on um. On the definitive plan decision and move forward with um, you know, until the, the full um. Residential, the MRSP was um. Through the appeal period and, and recorded, but um.
Question, is there an option three where we have, like, in this? Item I, we say, you know, this is every recorded in like the. Grafton Plinywood office, you know, with the state or something like that, and then after the. We can also vote to allow a addendum or in a modification of this. Definitive plan with the, with the actual Worcester Registry of Deeds information after the fact without triggering the. Like, is that kind of something we can do?
I think.
No, i- if it doesn't. If, if no one's too unhappy with it, I'd say let's go with the first option. Let's not invent something new if we don't need, don't really have to.
Oh, let's keep it as simple as we can.
But no.
So procedurally, I'd, I think. Um, respectfully, I think Mr. Wood does make a, a good comment. Um, I, I think. Potentially by referencing the, the filing with the clerk. And that negates the need to wait for the uh, full twenty day appeal period. It still references the decision. If the board were to make them both on the same night. And then from there, we could uh, just do a condition. Uh, well, I mean, it's a standard condition anyways that the. Recording the deed, the deed book and page be provided to the, the planning department. So that's already a standard.
That's already there. The, 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 what popped into my head just now was. Does the definitive plan approval need to have an explicit reference to the recording of the? Special permit, because if that explicit reference is not required. As part of the definitive plan, and I'll bet you it's not, then in this particular case, we could write condition I. Uh, this was something along the lines of the special permit. Will be recorded in the Worcester Registry of Deeds and the recording information will have been submitted to the planning board. So we could sort of make, just make reference to the fact that the special permit will be recorded, is required to be recorded. Without having to reference the book and page. Might want to double check, but I, I don't think the definitive plan has to have that reference in it.
Yeah, um. I'm not sure about this, but I remember a long time ago, people being concerned that. Uh, things weren't being, being recorded for a long time, and that was somehow an issue. I don't know, when, when does the um, two years on the special permit start?
So it, it, um, that's the, I guess, the issue with the um. If it's not recorded with the registry of deeds, uh, what it does. Um, ideally, the, the decision is recorded right after the twenty day appeal period. Um, when that doesn't happen. Um, it can create somewhat of a gray area where um, similar to if something is uh, voted on and not, you know. Is it the, the date of the vote of the board? Is it the date that it's filed with the clerk? Uh, or is it the date um, that it's recorded with the, with the registry of deeds? Some of the conditions will reference that specific date. Others, it can create that gray area and, and lack of clarity. A lot of the MGL is not clear on which one specifically. So I always, when in doubt, I always kind of, you know, the, the registry of deeds makes the decision valid. And so until it's done with the registry of deeds, um, the decision's technically invalid. Not that that always stops things.
Oh, but in, in a number of senses, it doesn't exist until it's been recorded at the registry of deeds.
Correct.
Uh, is there something that, that this particular deed, it seems like a very minor detail, but, you know, it may or may not turn out to be significant. Um, i- is there some, and, and I know that it doesn't sound like we're going to be able to arrive at. A really comfortable answer tonight as to whether, whether this definitive plan approval document needs to reference the. Book and page of the special permit. It, it would, would we be better off, you know, kind of? Getting, getting a little bit of investigation done to make sure that, of what. Make sure that we're clear on what, what exactly this definitive plan approval must say.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm just not sure off the top of my head in, in terms of if it needs to explicitly reference. So I guess unless the, the applicant had any kind of um, feeling one way or the other, I would, I would recommend that we kind of. Take a minute to, to hash out the procedural details.
And in fact, just to, just to be on the safe side in terms of the timing. Of votes on decisions and filing with town clerk and filing of the registry. Uh, we could even hold off on final approval of this decision. Until our next meeting when we, when we have that question, we have a good answer to that question. And considering the fact that our next meeting is three weeks from now, twenty-one days. It's conceivable that this, the special permit could almost have achieved its recording at the registry. Right around the time we'll be doing our next meeting. Depending on how quickly the, the applicant gets the paperwork through, how quickly things can be handled with the registry, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
But yeah, it does, this does run the risk of extending, effectively extending the ultimate approval of the definitive plan. But because we've not encountered this particular situation before, we're not really sure. How best to handle it, just, it's, it's really a kind of a procedural matter, but. How best to handle it? Just it's it's really a kind of a procedural matter, but making sure that things happen in the right sequence.
If if I could just interject, uh Zach Utore representing the applicant, um my only concern to that uh being. Is the definitive plan will carry an additional, I believe, twenty twenty one day appeal period as well. So effectively by waiting for the special permit to then go through, be recorded, which could take twenty to twenty or so odd days and then. Getting all of that squared away. Coming back to an additional meeting and then now having to wait another three, four weeks. Again, for the definitive now to be. Approved. It's just, that's kind of a, that's a big delay for. My client who's very, very eager to hit the ground running. So if we could make it so the appeal periods line up and kind of. Move the process along, I think that would be more beneficial to the applicant.
Chris, remind me, remind me of your option one. I thought that was a long time ago. Yeah, but I thought it sounded but like it was gonna do this.
Yeah, so I think the the option one was to um. The board could make the motion if they were, you know, one way or the other, and the reference would be administratively added. Afterwards, um.
Saying that that will be done would be included in what we vote on.
Right, and and having, having the discussion now, I think that may be more challenging because of the twenty day appeal period. So in order to administratively add it, we need the appeal period done and to be recorded at the registry of deeds. So I wouldn't be able to update. And issue the decision and file it with the clerk until that. So that's where I think um again, I I think the the option that. If if we were to move forward on the quickest timeline per the comments of the applicant, I think the best. Way to proceed would be to reference the filing date with the um. With the clerk rather than an actual book and page.
So for for the definitive plan decision to reference the special permit as filed with by referring to the filing date with the town clerk, yeah.
Or as vo- or as voted by the board and on such and such date.
That that gets back to my thought that if if the definitive plan does not. Have to have a book and page reference for the special permit, we could then move forward essentially on 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 that, on that basis by. You know, we, we have an alternative reference to the special permit, which doesn't require us to wait to know the book and page. If we, if we could do that, and if we can confirm that that's uh that's legitimate. And like I say, I think probably it is, but. Uh, you know, I'd like to have some higher authority confirm that. That that would be the way to go to minimize delays. I, you know, I. I have to agree with the applicant. I don't want, I would prefer not to have to delay this any longer than we absolutely have to. Uh, I mean, the worst case, what we're talking about now is, you know, we'll, we'll approve the definitive plan. With the assumption, on the assumption that we can reference it. Without having to have the book and page. I would like to, I would like to have that verified by, you know, someone else in the know. That that that's that, that's actually legitimate. Seems like it should be.
Right, so so I believe that's a procedural matter, so um if the board were willing to and the the applicant were willing to proceed under that um tonight. Um, I would just know that that, you know. I would obviously look into that. I just don't know off the top of my head for sure tonight. Um, I'll definitely look into that ASAP, but um. If the board were to move forward on that, it's, it's, my understanding is it would be a procedural matter and it could open it up to some liability and appeal, but. I guess that's up to the the board and the applicant to to decide if they want to run that risk.
I just. I just go back to that old thing that want to be sure that recordings are done promptly. And I think that was what maybe how. At least contributed to how this kind of language got into our decisions. And I I don't know. What uh whether, what are options?
Uh if I could interject one one more time, um so would the board be amenable? To adding a condition of the definitive plan that um the book and page to be provided to the planning department before issuance of a building permit? So therefore he wouldn't be able to start construction or even pull the permit until. That information was provided to the planning department. So then you're guaranteed that the recording gets done.
So that's. That's innately uh required. So technically, in order to issue the building permit, you'll need to have the twenty day appeal period, which would give the book and page. So that would be, that would, that's already um essentially a condition. That what it is, is that the the decision for the definitive can't. Reference procedurally cannot reference the book and page for the um. MRSP decision until it's recorded. So it is, again, it's a, it's a procedural. Kind of timeline issue. But um. That would, that would be, you know, I think if the, if the applicant and the board are are willing to move forward, I think the best. Course of action would be to um. To reference the decision as voted by the board on such and such date and time in terms of the major residential special permit.
Can you say that? This isn't valid until the book and page have been. Provided to the board to to us.
Yeah, I I. But again, I I don't know if. So so that's already. Covered as a condition that the the book and page already has to be provided to the planning department.
Yeah. If we say this decision is invalid, that kind of means that they just get submitted to the registry of deeds because that's a thing saying it's invalid in a way. Is how I understand it, meaning if we need the registry of deeds book number for the. Other plan first, in order to say that this decision by us is valid, then. That sort of defeats the purpose of allowing this to be submitted in the first place, you know, ahead of that coming in.
Uh not, not to throw a complication into this, but the. The special permit decision that we just approved. Requires that the special permit be recorded prior to submitting, submitting any plans for the creation of lots. So if you you could take that to mean that the special permit was supposed to have been recorded before the definitive plan was submitted. Now, the timing and that doesn't work out and that's, that's, that's our normal process. I wonder if we should. Considering what we've just been talking about. What we're concerned about is making sure that the special permit is recorded promptly, going back to some of what Bob was saying. And, you know, that condition in the, in this, in the condition in the special permit approval basically was intended to motivate prompt recording. But the way that this, that's condition was written. Didn't actually, I I we had, I didn't, I didn't just sort of looked over because it, it's our standard language. But in this case here, that condition really ought to have been. And I'm not sure, and I don't know if I want to worry about it. Because that, we, we already voted on that. We're done with it. Now we're struggling with. The definitive plan decision. But one can kind of loosely interpret that special permit condition as saying. You know, you got to get that special permit recorded before we'll really consider the definitive plan to be properly approved. So arguably, that should motivate the prompt recording of the special permit.
And that's. Without saying what on what we're looking at now. On the definitive plan to sue.
So I I. I don't know. I guess, I guess we're, I guess we're. You know. We're wondering about the definitive plan decision not having a book and page reference for the special permit.
I'm wondering about.
Correct, and and I.
Work gets done.
And so we're, uh you know, we, we may, we may proceed on the assumption that the special permit will be recorded promptly. After, after the appeal period is over. And that the board will be notified of the recording because that's required as one of the conditions of the special permit. And if our definitive plan approval. Basically. It's kind of lost a train of thought here, but I mean, we're talking about the definitive plan approval. Referencing the special permit, but not by book and page because we don't have the book and page yet. But finding, finding a valid reference for the special permit. Uh, we're kind of assuming that the special permit will get recorded. Without placing a condition on the definitive plan approval that the special permit have been recorded before we issue the approval.
Could I offer a another suggestion?
Please. So.
Our heads are hurting here.
I. I know. Um, so I I've seen it in uh other towns too where um. They really put an emphasis on things being recorded. So in like, in this case, could we? Have it so that they both run the same appeal period, but. That there's condition of approval that if the applicant does not submit. The special permit book and page, then the planning department has the right to hold the definitive decision so that cannot be recorded. So therefore they get approved. If that's the way the board is leaning at the same time, they can go through the same appeal period. But until that book and pages receive, the definitive decision will not be released. So therefore that cannot be recorded. Therefore, he can't move forward. So then you get your guarantee that it's recorded, you get your book and page, but then. It's on this, it's, it's a tighter timeline for the applicant. So therefore, yeah, he might have to wait an additional day or two to record the. Definitive decision, but we're not talking now another twenty one to a month. You know what I'm saying? Just a, just a thought.
It doesn't run into a exposure on the, on a, on any shot clocks. You know, or decision deadlines.
So, so. In order to do that, uh conditioned or not, it's already, in order to get a building permit, it's already required. So what would happen is. In either case. What the, what the decision would reference is the. Decision date to, you know, presumably tonight for the, well, it was tonight for the. Uh MRSP as voted by the board on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty. Um, and the book and page, I mean, we could include a condition that it be provided, but it's, it's already. Included as um. A condition in the MRSP. Um, so the board could move forward on that. It's just. That would, that would align the the two twenty day. Uh appeal periods, but that's the thing, the, once it's filed with the board or with the clerk, you know, you can't change it. So I wouldn't be able to then go in administrative lady later and reference the MRSP by book and page. Um, so the board just has to decide if they're comfortable with that. Um, again, I think it's a procedural issue, I think. Uh, you know.
If I drop my um. Prompt recording issue, uh we, I think we can get going. Can't we? Yeah, I I I think the way we've just been discussing it and largely the way Chris outlined. Seems like it ought to work. We approve both decisions tonight. They they get filed with the town clerk. The appeal periods run concurrently. Essentially, we write this condition and whatever exact way, however, Chris can wordsmith it. To to uh basically. Ensure that all the correct references are being made and this, everything happens the way it's supposed to. It's just, you know, this, this is, we, we find ourselves in an, an, a position that. We've certainly never been in in my time on the board and maybe much longer. We're, we're running the. Major residential special permit and the definitive plan concurrently, uh where normally they happen in sequence. So we're trying to find the best way to deal with that as expeditiously as possible. And I think although we, you know, we still may not have the. The the exact wording worked out. I think, I think we've got the concept down.
Can we? Are there any other points to talk about, Chris?
Uh, no, I believe those are the the main ones.
Can we get a motion?
I'll, I'll give one a shot, and if I need to change it, someone please speak up. But I move that we approve this decision, including the approval of the related waiver for the easement. With the discussion as had specifically with regards to the registry of deed reference, we'll mention, we'll reference based on the filing with the. Based on the vote of the decision with the planning board. And we'll confirm that doing so without a explicit registry of deeds. Reference in the, in this decision is something that is okay. And we'll have David Robbins review the final. The final language in the decision. And should there be a concern with registry of deeds information, the board and the applicant will be informed. Via email at the earliest convenience.
Moving second.
Whatever you say. Discussion. Discussion.
Long motion, yes.
I'll just, I'll throw one thing out there, and that is in the worst possible case, which I seriously doubt will arise. The board may need to come, come to, you know, eat, take this up again at a future meeting. In the interest of time, we might want to call a special meeting for the sole purpose of dealing with this, should that become necessary, but. I'll just throw that out as a worst case possibility, which I rather doubt will come to pass.
But if if we. Vote. I'm not sure how we bring it, how we talk about it again, if if we take our vote tonight.
Good question. Do. Is it within our power to?
We either have to say yes or no.
Yeah.
Can't say, uh, sorta.
I don't know if it's within our power to uh rescind a decision or modify decision once we voted on it. Questions never come up, at least not to me.
So it would be, so I um. If I'm understanding correctly with the. Uh, the board's discussion and in terms of a um potential special meeting, special hearing in order to to discuss the decision, that's in terms of. Um, if the way I. Kind of finalize it um for uh Dave's review, if he feels that there are aspects that are not indicative of the board's. Kind of direction, then it would uh go back before the board to be at that special hearing to, to be discussed. How that should be written. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's kind of what I was thinking was that, you know, it. If it, for whatever reason, if it turns out that. We simply cannot find a way to write the decision, the conditions, the way we've discussed. And the board needs to reconsider something, something about it. Then does, is it within the board's purview? Once we, see, we voted on decision tonight, so assuming we do. I suppose before we file the decision with the town clerk. We could, if necessary, continue deliberation on it and revise it. Like, once we filed it with the town clerk, it's sort of set in stone though, isn't it?
It, so it is and it isn't. Um, so the, I believe the board still has the um. Authority to either modify their previous decision or um. Or rescind in any case, so um. Even if it's filed with the clerk, if there's some um. Kind of significant issues with it, the board does still retain the power to um amend as needed. Uh, there is still, needs to be the public hearing for that.
Yeah, well.
It's. Whole process again in order to to amend it, but.
Right, I'm, 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 I'm thinking in terms of something that would not. Right, I'm, 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 I'm thinking in terms of something that would not, would not be requiring new information such, such a. Such that a public hearing will be required. It's more. You know, basically a continuation of the deliberation on the decision. And I, and like I said, I'm. I'm seriously doubtful that it's going to come out that way. I'm just sort of, you know, here, here I am, like, I'm just sort of. Got my worst case hat on here thinking, what, what's the worst that could happen here?
Um. We're, we're not, what we're doing is not part of the hearing.
Correct.
Don't have to post a hearing. Um, I think that you could. Yeah, I think you have to do a reconsideration. You, you have to bring up a reconsideration of a decision. Um, and you, you know that. I think that's the mechanism, you just put it on the agenda.
Alright, so let's, so let's, so let's leave it at that. I doubt that it'll happen, but if it does, we'll look at it that way. I, I, I see absolutely no reason that we would be. Interested or feel we would, we would need to reopen the public hearing or. Or is open to a public, and that's not where I'm going with this at all. I'm just worried about making, you know. We want to get the language of this decision done as quickly as possible. We want the whole thing to be able to move forward as fast as possible. You know, it's just. Because there's a little bit of uncertainty in exactly how we're going to write this out. Uh. And I think I want to just leave it at that, that, that there's, you know, there's just enough uncertainty about how exactly we write that out. We're pretty confident that we can make it work. But it's just what happens if we find that.
Okay.
Really wrong with the way we're trying to write it.
Did Justin's motion, is it consistent with what you just said, Dave?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, and who seconded it?
Uh, problem.
Prabu, Prabu. Prabu, are you um? Oh, there you are. Um, are you okay? You're, you're the second or? Are you okay?
Yes.
Was that? Yes. Okay. Any more discussion on this? Motion. Hearing none, David.
Aye.
Justin.
Aye.
Linda.
Aye.
Prabu. Prabu.
Aye.
And uh, I vote aye. Motion carries. Some kind of a record, I think. Okay, we can move on. I think. Request for special permit SP twenty twenty dash oh four and site plan approval at two seventy four Providence Road. Providence Street Village.
Hello, my name is Dan Hazen. I'm with Gary and Hal Nan. I'm here representing Providence Street Village. Um, since the last meeting, a few months ago. We've gone through uh, review with Graves Engineering. We've resolved. Almost all of their comments. Um, just to recap of the site, it's a thirty six thousand square foot site. Located between Providence Road and Main Street in South Grafton near the Cumberland Farms. Um, it's proposing eight three bedroom units on water and sewer. In the mixed use development. The stormwater will be designed to remain on site. Um. We received comments back from. All the boards. Except for the fire department. Um, I've reached out to them. Previously, I have not heard back from them. The police did uh, respond today asking for lighting at the intersections. Um, we haven't had a chance to add that to the plans yet. To update the lighting plan, but um. There were three comments that Graves had left open for the planning board. Um, I don't know if, Chris, if you want to go through those and. Or if you want to. Take over and move through those.
Yep, I can pull those up one second.
Okay. We have two comments left remaining for, to finalize the plans, they're minor um. Minor in detail, one of them was to extend the erosion control barrier about twenty five feet on the erosion control plan. And the other comment was um, just to add a couple of spot grades on the grading plans just for uh. But again, those are very minor details to address. And I'll put those on the final plans to be submitted if. Um, along with the lighting that the police had asked for.
Um, so just to clarify, there is also the um. Landscaping plans being stamped by a registered landscape architect.
Right, we were going to ask for a waiver from that. Um. The woman in our office that does this, she's not a registered landscape architect. Um, she's been doing this for many, many years. She actually did the project on um. For Alfonso in uh, North Grafton. So, I mean, the, the last project that you approved for the mixed use. So we're going to add that if that's okay with the board as a waiver request for this. Um. Like I said, it's a. Pretty minor site. Size wise. Not a whole lot of landscaping on it.
Remember, Chris, did. We need to have that waiver for the mixed use, or did that not need that? Offhand.
Um. I'd have to go back and check. Um. I know that was a. Um. I'd have to, I'd have to double check. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
So yeah, that was one of the first comments that they had. Um. Yeah, plans need to address landscaping, landscaping plan's been provided, the plan needs to be prepared by RLA. Unless the planning board authorizes a deviation from this requirement. Uh, number ten.
Anyone going to object to a waiver on that?
No.
Linda says no.
Oh, no, no objection.
Okay, we can add that to the cover sheet for a waiver request. And submit a formal request for that.
Mister, Mister Chair?
Yes.
There is a question, the Q and A relevant to the specific discussions now. Steve Texera.
Yes.
Asks, isn't the landscaping important to protect the butters of light and noise?
Yeah, he also has a comment um. Document in, in our. Uh, most recent. Items in, in the project file. So we ought to.
Address.
Touch on uh, while we're at this.
You know, the question is only whether the landscape plan needs to be stamped by a registered landscape architect, not, not whether there should be landscaping plans, there are landscaping plans. It's just a question, it's stamped by a registered architect.
Yeah. So if there's, if there's no uh. None of the board members are. Concerned with that, uh, I think. But we can assume that, that it, they can. Proceed. With uh, on the basis of putting in a waiver request, we're not approving it, but. No one's objecting, no, no one's indicating they're going to object to it. What else do we have?
The next comment's number twelve. Um, Graves deferred to the planning board and town staff, whether the. Proposed building location complies with the front yard setback requirement. In the village and neighborhood mixed use district regulation for attached single family dwellings. The plan proposed off-street parking, which seems reasonable, but the regulation indicates minimum and maximum required front yard setbacks. Of five feet and fifteen feet respectively. And the sketch that accompanies the regulation appears to show on-street parking. That was one of the ones that Graves deferred. Um. We currently have the building setback from Providence Road. Um, from the right away line, they're approximately sixty feet. To allow for parking and driveway in the front yard there. And. From the um. From the main street side. The buildings are set back. Approximately seventy eight feet. Um. And there is no on-street parking on either. Um, one twenty-two or one twenty-two way. We didn't feel that this would be a. Good area for on-street parking. Um. One being Providence Road being a state highway. And um. Just the volume of traffic and. The ability to have vehicles parked on-site and. In front of their own units respectively.
So you're saying the setback is. More than. The maximum that the bylaw. Speaks of.
Correct, it says um. Fifteen feet maximum. So to do that, we would have to move, you can actually see the setback line. On both the um. The east and the west side. Um. Along Providence Road, that dashed line that runs um, north to south. Between the parking area and the uh, silt fence.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I think the bylaws imagining a somewhat different configuration. Of a village mixed use than is applicable in this case. I think the. Yeah, I'd have to take another look at it, but. My, my, with the best of my recollection, the way, you know, sort of the, what was in the imagination when we did that, that bylaw. And some of those setback, setback requirements was a, a somewhat different situation than we find ourselves here in this particular lot, so. I would be inclined to have some flexibility in that regard. Now, the uh, the bylaw is looking more at a mixed use, you know, within a kind of a. A, a, a set or a block of streets. That are amenable to on-street, largely on-street parking and buildings that are set fairly close to the street. And in, and a lot of places where we see this bylaw being applied, that could make a lot of sense. Uh. The South Grafton Village Mixed Use District is somewhat unusual in that regard compared to what. The mixed use regulations and bylaw were really designed for. So I think we had, you know, we, we would have, we really have to take the circumstances of an individual piece of property into account. Uh, here and what's adjacent to this and. And the idea of on-street parking with buildings set relatively close to the street just doesn't seem to work here. So I, I would be inclined to have a fair amount of flexibility on that.
But do, do we have the power? To do that? Um, we, we can waive subdivision rules. But I'm not sure. And I, I don't remember whether the bylaw gives us a power. Uh, in this case for zoning. That, that's defined in the zoning, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, it, it is, and I'm pretty sure we do have the power, I would have to go back and, and recheck it to make sure, but. Uh, this is the sort of thing where the board really needs to uh, be able to exercise some flexibility. Uh, in adapting a particular project to a particular area.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that we need that. My question is, what can we do? At this point, without evending the bylaw?
We'll have, we'll have to look at that.
Kurt, you're gonna have to look.
Yeah, so I believe um, as a special permit granting authority uh, on this matter, the, the board would have the authority. Um, to accept the waiver. Um, in terms of some of those requirements.
So would that be something that we just requested waiver from on this?
I believe so, so, so similar to if it was a, you know, so typically a. I guess the, the question being whether or not, uh, if I'm understanding it, whether or not the board has the authority to grant. Um, variance or uh. De- deviation from the zoning bylaw. Um, and I believe in this case, being the special permit granting authority, they would be, it would be under their purview to, to grant such.
Usually. We say in general, or we have said in general, we don't have that power except in. Bylaw where we've been granted it. Um. So I would say um. Best, maybe the best we can do is move along and, and Chris, you can check. Documented and or check with Jenny.
Yep.
Okay. Or find, find a way to, I, I'm certainly not interested in on-street parking and um, I don't mind. I don't think I mind, you know, what's being proposed.
Do we need a vote for Chris to check with Jenny on that topic?
No, I don't think so.
I didn't think so.
He has um. Based, based on uh, past experience. Planner. Usually anticipates all this and has already done it. Um. We never even knew. Um. Okay, uh, you, uh, you have one, one more. Point?
Yeah, there was one more for an outdoor amenity space for um, gathering areas and benches. Um. Gee, Graves deferred to the planning board whether outdoor amenity space needs to be provided. I mean, if that's. Just as far as adding a couple of benches or, I mean, each unit has a deck. But um. We can add a few benches if that's to the, the. Um. Board's desire.
Do, do any of the board members? Feel strongly about needing it? If we can give it?
Yeah, a question for them is where would you add it if you had the benches?
Uh, that's kind of a, I mean, I'm thinking maybe in the northeast. Corner. Um. Close to the Hachowski's property. To the top, top corner there maybe. There's not really a. A, a very um, large area for. A gathering area in uh, in this day and age. I don't know if gatherings are allowed anymore anyways, so.
Well, there might be, you know, there's a chance that sometime down, you know, a few years from now.
In the future.
Gather. Um, who knows?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just, we can add it. It's.
In, in the, in the interest of uh. Going home tonight, um. How about if uh? Chris, because I think there's, there may be the same question, can we waive it? Um. So Chris, Chris can get a little uh. Input on that and feedback to you if he needs to. Okay?
I'll say for, for myself, I think if we can waive it, I'd be comfortable waiting it for this property. You know, spots I could think of it really going. You know, every, every place has a deck as you mentioned, so that's a pretty convenient gathering place for people that. Live in this area. You know, live in these spots, but then. Where the bench would go, it would, to my mind, be more likely used by people walking. You know, that would walk down Providence Road or. You know, or something like that, they might stop at one of these benches and I don't. I don't see a strong need for it, given the size of this lot.
Yeah, this again is a bit of a mismatch between this particular location and this particular project. And the, the, the general concept of mixed use projects as they were envisioned in the latest iteration of the. Mixed use zoning bylaw. You know, and, and again, we have to, it's, it's important that we, I think we, you know. As we begin to deal, this is really the only, only the second mixed use project we've ever reviewed as a board. Uh, and uh. You know, we're going to find as we, as we. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're going to find as we, as we review more of these projects, we're going to find other, other things, no doubt. Where it turns out the, the bylaw doesn't work quite the way we thought it would in some cases. So, you know, you know, we, uh, we need to, we need to be sure we understand what flexibility we can and cannot exercise here. And if there are aspects of this where we're finding ourselves constrained to a point where we can't see, we can't do things the way we think that we really want to. We'll have to revisit the bylaw at some point, but right now the task is to, uh, you know, to, to be clear on what we can and cannot waive in terms of bylaw requirements. And this is another one that the, the, the outdoor amenity spaces were imagined as part of a generally larger mixed use complex than the case we're looking at here.
I think we've covered the base. Chris is gonna check.
Sounds like a plan.
Dan, Dan, do you have anything else before I?
No, sir, I do not.
Do any board members have any other questions or concerns?
I think you still have to address, explain to the man who wrote the message.
I'm, 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 we have inputs from Steve Texera, is that right? What, one in the Q and A and then the, uh, written comment from the tenth. And I'm coming around to those. As a public input, once board members have had their chance. Okay, in the Q and A, he asked, will they accomplish the objective of minimizing? I don't know what that is. I don't know what he's.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Minimizing what?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, suggest, I, I do have the option of allowing him to speak if that may be more clear.
That would be, that would be great.
Hi Steve, are you, uh, able, able to speak?
Uh, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks so much. So largely asking that the landscape design would give me some separation and isolation from what's going to be a big neighbor, the equivalent of eight new neighbors, uh, within a short number of feet, so fifty to a hundred feet. And here we are with, uh, several neighbors and asking that there is an opportunity to design in a barrier which will give me protection from the noise and light distribution of the project. So, thanks for your time.
So would it be helpful if I pulled up the landscaping plans?
Yeah.
That might be.
Yeah, on this plan, you can see the existing tree line and the proposed tree line, the existing tree lines a lighter shade and it's, it's closer into the lot. And then the proposed tree lines, the darker one that's out. In the area near his property, um, the trees are getting cut back about ten feet. But we're proposing two white oaks in that area.
The, um, letters are too small on my screen to locate uh, his, his property.
This is to the southeast.
So, oh, I see, okay. And so now.
So we might have an opportunity in that area to add a couple of arbivites if, uh, Dave Claro, the applicant is online as well as us. You know, unless he has some other ideas for that area. What was that, Dave? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was saying, I would be okay with some arbivites if that would help, if that would help the situation. I'm not opposed to anything like that.
Okay, so may, maybe you can look at that. Okay, now, uh, in the written input, he, there were a couple of questions from, uh, Steve. I'm asking for clarification on what the existing zoning would allow on this lot versus this request. It allows this. And, uh, you know, a whole array of stuff. True.
I believe so.
Yes. So beyond that, I'm not sure that there's too much to say. Also, with regard to the updates and responses to the raised issues, what is the proposed option for the tree line? I think we maybe covered that. Will it be an effective solution for twelve months and will it be mature planning with adequate height for elimination of noise and light pollution? What do you think, Chris?
So, uh, I would note that the existing tree line, although it is reduced, um, there is still some of that tree line to remain. Um, and as the applicant noted, they were amenable to arbivites, which are green for twelve year, or twelve months, rather.
Does the twelve foot, uh, the fifteen foot offset continue from Main Street to Providence Road? It seems to shrink approaching Providence Road along my property line.
That would be the building setback that I have shown on there. We have the fifteen foot maximum setback. Um, it does stay the same. It does stay fifteen feet going as drawn. I mean, it's I just offset the property line fifteen feet.
Is, is the sidewalk to Providence Road okay? There is no sidewalk on this side of the street nor crosswalk. Well, either you can have a sidewalk out, out to there or people can find some other way to get there. Um, so it seems to me you have to, you, you really want to have a sidewalk out to there. And the state decides where, in fact, not too long ago, it decided where no, actually, it's, it's in process as to where sidewalks are. I don't remember whether the plan for, uh, Main Street, there, there's a big project for Main Street all the way from here to the, to the Sutton Line. And, uh, one of the biggest problems in it is, um, pitting the sidewalks in. So, so I have no idea. I, I, I don't remember all the way down there where the sidewalk situation is, but I don't think there's too much we can do about it. Even if there isn't a sidewalk or a crosswalk there, what can we do? Any other? Any other inputs for us tonight? Anything else from the board? Anything else from you, Chris? And you need, do you, do you want to ask for continuation to, uh, clean those things up?
Yes, I would like to request a continuation to the next meeting and, um, is it okay if I just contact Chris to discuss the waiver requests prior to the next meeting, just to?
Unless he objects. And that's, that's what I always say, ask him. Okay, um.
Be in touch. I appreciate your time.
I, I move that we accept the applicant's forthcoming. We're in request to continue this public hearing until our next meeting, which is September fourteenth, twenty twenty at seven thirty P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, second. Discussion hearing, uh, David.
Hi.
Justin.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Prabhu. Prabhu.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Uh, motion carries. Yes.
Just a quick, uh, a quick question. Um, is the board feel comfortable, um, directing me to draft the decision at this point in time?
I'm not gonna stop you.
I, I think we're pretty far along in this, that, uh, we're just looking at the waivers, but in terms of the site plan, I discussion didn't seem to be too.
How about if I say without objection, go ahead?
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I'll say I might have things to come back to during the next public hearing with the sealed updated plans, but I don't anticipate anything at this point.
You know, I hopefully will tweak, tweak those few things we talked about, or settle on what answer it has to be. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you. On a side note, good luck with your administrator search. I spent a lot of time in that board over, for about thirty years while my mother was working there, so. It was, uh.
Yes.
Damn, Magato in there.
You remember Dan?
Oh, yes, very well.
I remember the night the selectman got it, voted, voted to hire him. And, and George Prunier jumped up, ran over to the phone and called him to tell him.
Yeah, those were good times back then.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
I, I think we can move on to the snow road. We have let me see. What? We're gonna just open it up for both of them because I think we're gonna, we may want to be, be separating out a little bit. Uh, what, 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 uh, lot three is the, oh, no, yeah, uh, lot three is the, uh, site plan only. How about if we do the site plan? Uh, item E.
Mr. Chairman, um, James Tatro from Thompson Listener Associates, representing the applicant uh, for site plan approval on lot three, uh, C I, C I L Realty of Massachusetts. And, um, sure, that's fine. Um, I, I do think they should be taken separately because, um, there's specifically special permit criteria uh, with regard to, uh, the application on lot two that aren't, uh, applicable in the case of lot three. So I I would probably wish to, to separate them, yeah. Um, in regard to lot three, uh, we have now, uh, a letter from, uh, Graves Engineering reviewing uh, all of the engineering aspects. Um, again, there is, uh, one, um, little glitch in regard to that we did provide, uh, plan showing all of the structures within two hundred feet. And in regard to their other, uh, suggestion of Graves on, on its last letter on item number fourteen, that it suggested that uh, the applicant, there should be a condition suggesting, uh, 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 um, that, uh, the, uh, site distance work be done right up front. Um, and that, that that be confirmed at, at both of these driveways, we're, we're fine with that. We have, we have no objection to that. Again, we provided a, uh, a specific additional plan, a site distance plan to show that from each of these driveways, there should be adequate site distance in both directions. And we have no objection to, uh, the peer reviewers' suggestion that, um, that should be done right away, so it's available to, uh, during the construction phase to construction vehicles. And then that should be confirmed. We have no objection to those conditions. Uh, I would just, uh, briefly touch on, I know, I noticed there was a, a comment from, uh, one of your butters. Um, who again raised the issue, which was discussed at the last meeting of uh, runoff to the, to the railroad. We saw the comment letter from the railroad. Um, and I'm just gonna read these numbers very quickly. I apologize for reading something to you, but these are the the storm pre and post development flows to the railroad. Uh, after the, uh, in-ground infiltration areas are, are installed. And this has been agreed to by your reviewer. The two-year storm, one point two C F S now, zero point one nine afterward. The ten-year storm, three point five one now, zero point eight six afterwards. The twenty-five-year storm, five point six five C F S now, one point five three C F S afterwards. Again, so that's a twenty-five-year storm and it's a little over a quarter of the same flow. Uh, and in the hundred-year storm, the, the percentages aren't quite as, as dramatic, but it's still well under the flow. I just, so I just want to emphasize that I know your, this butter has raises again. I'm not sure why nothing will satisfy the butter in that regard. But the peer reviewer was satisfied upon reviewing the, the calculations and the plans. And it really shows that there actually is going to be a pretty dramatic decrease in the flow of water to the railroad. So I just wanted to touch on that one, especially in regard to lot three, because lot three is primarily the one with, uh, um, where the drainage goes through to the railroad. So I, I would, uh, just take any questions, uh, that you may have.
Questions on that?
Has this finished with its conservation commission?
Yes, it is. We, uh, we're, voted a, uh, stormwater permit on both of these lots at the commission's meeting on the eight, the eighteenth, yes.
And just for my information, I know they, they gave you the permit, so not that, what about their discussion points as much, but did they share any of the concerns about runoff toward you know, the railroad, for example, as was mentioned by the butter? Or any other types of concerns that were discussed, I mean, that, that you think is relevant to at least address here today?
Well, it, there are, obviously it was a, a broad overlap in, in the issues discussed under site plan approval and the issues discussed under stormwater management permit. Um, they did look at the, they did consider, and we talked briefly about, um, the drainage issue. They were satisfied that their peer reviewer had gone over this. Um, and that he was satisfied. Uh, and frankly, I would, you know, I would tell you, if you look at the, the, not to get too far into the weeds. If you look at the, uh, what D E P tells you for a, for the material under the infiltration area on lot three, a lomi sand. D E P tells you that for a lomi sand, you have to give it a this, a structure and infiltration rate of two point four inches per hour. Which is, let's round it up, round it around and say that that's a, a twenty-minute or so percolation rate. Well, lomi sands will actually almost always perk much faster than that. There's actually a, a bit of factor of safety that D E P has built into this in regard to the infiltration rate that they require you to use based on the soil texture that was observed. Um, so I would even tell you, especially early on in, in, in the use of a project, that you probably actually see a better infiltration rate and less outflow from a structure than the overall modeling suggests, because D P is, is being fairly conservative in the rate that they give you.
And in alternative topic, kind of a question from me is assuming this is something that, you know, I'm assuming that it's something that your applicant has the power, you know, you have the applicant have the power to establish even with the site plan for you know, viewing distance, stopping distance for the, on snow road, would a mirror across, you know, a mirror that helps see just a little bit better from either oncoming cars or even leaving the driveway be something that you'd be amenable to having done? If the board or planner thinks it's worth doing?
Um, I, I think Mr. Venikasa is on the line. I, I, my initial reaction is that, that wouldn't be a problem, but, uh, Mr. Venikasa, would you want to, uh, jump in and, uh, um, speak on that point?
I'm fine with putting a mirror across the street if someone in the board wants.
Can you hear me or not?
Yeah, I, I can hear you, yes. I think that's all the questions I have off, off the top of my head right now. I'll defer to others.
Chris, there are you wanna go down through these Q and A?
Yeah.
Inputs?
Do you, uh, should I just read them, or I, I know that a lot of them are not, uh, indicating they have their names, but not the addresses. Um, I can either allow people to speak, or, um, if you'd like, I could read the, the questions that they have.
Why, why don't you read the question and then we'll see if we need that?
So we have, um, Andrew Burton, uh, has the question, isn't the pre-after they moved all that dirt in and not the original land, the way it was before the bulldozed it?
And, and Mister Chairman, the, the answer is no, because you don't. Yes, the applicant inappropriately began clearing work, but the comparison of pre and post-development and, you know, drainage report is not uh, post-development to, once you've cleared this, cleared the site and you're partway through the work, it is the condition before work began.
Um, so this next one is a statement more than a question, but, uh, this is from Greg Puchel, uh, the Grafton Upton Railroad General Manager is the one who said they are still not okay with the drainage plan following the last meeting. He has a second, uh, uh, statement, specifically John DeWale, General Manager of the Grafton Upton Railroad.
Yeah, um.
I don't know if the board wants to comment on any of that.
But my thought, it, thought is that I'm not sure that we can do any more than the base we've covered. As I recall, the railroads, um, comments said that they would protect their rights if they needed to, and I think the applicant is aware of that, so I, I, I don't think that maybe somebody can tell me, but I don't think we have any authority beyond what we, what we've done. Okay, this, would you agree, Chris?
Yeah, so I, I do think the, the applicant, as, as they discussed, it was, the, the question is in terms of the drainage towards the railroad tracks, and as, uh, Mister Tatro just expressed, uh, the pre and post-development drainage runoff is gonna be approved. Um, so, um, if that ends up not being the case, which is what, um, I believe the letter from the railroad was discussing, um, they were just indicating that they would be observing of that.
And, and on, on the applicant's behalf, we understand that concern, that is, it's perfectly natural. Um, all I would just would say is that we believe by using all of the standard convention and methodologies of, of doing a drainage report, that we're actually gonna severely decrease the flow onto the railroad property. Um, so I, I, I don't think it will be an issue, and again, again, your peer reviewer, I, I think, agreed with this.
Any board member have any thought on that before we move on?
No.
Okay, Chris?
Um, so, uh, Tony Sakora, uh, how and why have they been able to do modifications without any permits? Uh, I believe that was already discussed. Um, uh, they have done tons and tons of fill before any permits and do these grade levels on the site plan show existing or past, so, um, I think that was already discussed by the applicant.
Um, correct. They, the grades on the, the existing condition plan show the grades before any material was brought to the site.
Yeah, I'm, is he asking, how did they? How did you go ahead and do that without a permit? Was a permit required?
The, the stormwater, Mister Chairman, the storm, stormwater permit should have been sought before any of that work was done, uh, because more than, uh, twenty thousand square feet was being altered and required a stormwater permit, um, but the applicant mistakenly went ahead without having it.
Okay, but that's not in our bay, like, that's in Concom.
Conservation.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. There was one more item there, Chris, but it, it disappeared, so, oh.
Uh, he just, it was Tony Sakara that said, yes, that was what his question was.
Okay. Um, okay, now we have before I jump ahead, i- is there any, uh, anybody wanna say something before I get on to the next? Uh, we have some inputs. Let me see, I have from hard to read, Evan El- Elvinson. Address, uh, A, A Tracy, uh, and dry. That is talking about, I think, the suitability of it, uh, for a group home. Somebody else besides us decides about whether it's suitable.
All right, where's?
We, we don't have discretion in that area.
Which, what, what comment are you?
This is, this is the one, I, 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 I I gotta, uh, like the second one, th- this is August first.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay. From the exhibits, then?
Ellis. Ellis.
We start, did we lose you?
I
Oh, okay.
I guess the, the, the question in there is, I understand that D P H approval is required prior, prior to the town granting any permits. Is D P H approval required for this proposed property and/or has been granted? I don't think that's within our our responsibility of if D P H gets unhappy with them because they did this. That, that, that's their rule. Right?
Yeah, applicants are generally, generally required to comply with all applicable laws and regulations. It's not within the purview of this board to determine what those applicable laws and regulations are.
Yeah, okay, I'm, if there's nothing people need to do with that, I'll go on to, um, a comment dated, um, August ten, well, it's, yeah, it says August tenth, um, from Tracy Grady. This, this is all, I think this is also talking about, uh, is, this, is this, uh, a suitable place to do this? Again, we don't get to decide that, right?
Yeah, so again, this was actually brought up at the previous hearing and discussed there, and, um, it was noted that the, the applicant and the, um, they're aware of, of the, um, the railroad location in terms of, uh, this proposed use, um, and have no, um, aversion to that. So again, I, I also think that that falls in towards the Dover question that the board wouldn't be able to really act on.
Yeah, because calls for discretion and one, we don't have it. Now I have, uh, also, we have, um, the, the, the input, uh, that Nat, Natalie posted, uh, from Gregory, uh, where, uh, he's, he emailed me, it's fairly long, uh, brief, and, uh, I passed it back to Chris, and I guess he also sent it directly to Natalie. Uh, so it, it was put in the record, and he, I'm not sure whether he raises anything new. I think he basically summarizes all of discussions that we've had and, uh, things that have come up. Would that be correct?
Correct, yeah, so, so, um, essentially, all, all correspondence has to be included in the record, so, um, that's why that was added, um, but, yes, I, I believe it was mainly summarizing the, uh, the discussion to this point.
Yes, and then there's a Q and A from Tony Sakora. Uh, so this means the house will be much higher than shown on the site plans if these are not true elevations. I don't, whether it will or not, but I don't know what difference it makes, because we don't have discretion around that.
So the, the elevations being shown are going to be the, the final elevations that are required, so, um, regardless of the grading that has gone on beforehand, um, the plans rule the elevations, so, um, if they have to adjust that accordingly, that's.
I, I would just, if I could just jump in there briefly, Mister Chairman,
Mm-hmm.
um, that the duplex unit on lot three is proposed to sit over ground that before any filling was at approximately elevation three thirty-four, and the proposed first floor grade, uh, at that location is three thirty-four. Um, and it sits, you know, the back of that property is elevation three forty-four, ten feet higher. Um, so, in, in fact, the, you know, lo- first story of this, of this building isn't even gonna be very visible to, uh, to neighbors, and it, but it is, but it is proposed to be essentially at the grade that was the surface grade before any materials were brought to site.
It's probably worth reminding ourselves that the site plan and special permit for the other property, which we have yet to discuss, uh, does not address the height of the building. It addresses the layout of the site. The height of the building is regulated by the height limit of thirty-five feet in the zoning bylaw. Uh, you know, the, this, this, there's nothing that this board could say about height in the site plan approval. Uh, it's just, it, it, it is what, the maximum height is whatever the bylaw allows.
Except does, does Dover override that?
So, so just to clarify, so in terms of size and massing, um, those conditions are applicable for the board to consider and to require, uh, as needed. Um, so, um, although Dover does preclude many of the conditions, this, in terms of massing and, and, and size and location of the structures, that is something the board does have purview over, so.
And, and in that regard, I would just point to sheet D six. Um, in the bottom right corner, we have a zoning compliance table showing that, uh, the structure on lot three would comply with the zoning. Uh, again, just as the structure on lot two does.
Hey, Chris, that, what, what, what you were speaking of, we could require that they comply with the bylaw, but we couldn't look at massing, uh, and so on beyond what the bylaw permits.
No, so, so the, the board is, does have the purview to, to look at massing scale of the structures. Um, I think I would caution the board about restricting, um, more strictly than the existing bylaw conditions. The board may have the authority to do that, but, uh, you know, again, that becomes a little bit more restrictive than the existing bylaws. But, um, in terms of holding the structure to the existing bylaws, that is still something under the purview of, of the board, even with Dover.
And, and they are within the bylaw requirement, thirty-five.
Yeah, currently proposed that, that the, the plans are showing that it would meet the, um, the height requirements, but the board may have the authority to, to limit that further. I, I just would caution that a little bit.
Wonder if.
And just, just briefly too, I would note that, uh, in this zoning district, the applicant is actually allowed building coverage of thirty percent, uh, and the building coverage on lot three will be eleven and change percent. Um, it's actually quite a bit under what is allowed.
Yeah, but the, the objections aren't the coverage, the objections are the, I think mostly the height. Which
I can ask the question.
Yes?
So, uh, hey, Chris, would you mind bringing up the D six sheet? Is that the table? Uh, as if I read it, is the, is the proposed height less than the requirement? Or how should we read that?
Sorry, just having a little bit trouble loading.
I have it up on my screen. Do you want me to share my screen?
Uh, yeah, let me just make sure, let me see if I can. Yeah, you should be able to, to share now.
This is the table I was starting to.
Hmm.
How, how should we read this? Is the if it says the height here?
So the, so the building height is thirty-five feet, the proposed for, uh, lot three is twenty feet. So that is under the, the, what the zoning bylaw would allow.
Okay. I understand that the hiding, uh, the height question, is that an issue, or is, is that, it, it, it is complying with the requirements?
So it's complying with the requirements of the bylaw?
Okay.
So they would not, they would not be able to, under the zoning bylaw, if that were to apply, they would not be able to go above the thirty-five feet maximum for height.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, that gets us into the, um, if we try to go further, you know, more restrictive than the bylaw, uh, where, where in pretty, pretty questionable, or, you know, grounded is pretty shake.
I mean, if, so the, I mean, the proposal is for twenty feet, which is under the, under the bylaw, I mean, the, the board could presumably, put a requirement at the twenty feet if the, if the applicant indicated that they were fine with that, but I mean, it's what the, the proposed plan is, but, um.
Okay, well, I think we'll, I, I think we'll hit that when we come to the decision. Oh, uh, uh, now, Richard Sullivan says, the height concern is primarily for lot two, since that one will tower over the existing homes. We'll be getting to that in a little while. Right? Okay. Uh, have I overlooked any input that we need to, uh, consider here? If not, is there anything more the board needs? If not.
On the assumption that we have gathered all the information we need for this site plan approval. I move that the board close the public hearing and direct staff to draft a decision taking into account all the information that's submitted and testimony received.
Second.
Seconded by Linda. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Any discussion? David?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Prabhu?
Hi.
I vote I. Motion carries.
I do have one question, just primarily if Chris knows it was not ru- germane to any decision at all, so I didn't think to say it during, before we close the hearing, but if the use is changes, but still qualifies for Dover, like if it doesn't end up being brain injury, but it's another Dover related use, is there any requirement for notifying anybody?
I believe it would be a change in use, and they would have to notify the building inspector if it required additional. I believe it would be a change in use and they would have to notify the building inspector if it required additional approvals, and that would be handled at that time.
Yep. My thought is like if it still qualifies for Dover is something, you know, something else, but not brain injury is going in, but it still qualifies under Dover, you know, would that require a notification of some sort?
If if could I jump in there for I apologize, Chris? In that regard, as the applicants submitted previously, the there will be a deed restriction and a deed restriction, the lease that is not allowing this use to be, you know, pick out whatever other Dover use, you know, what you could think up. It's you have extra protection in the fact of the deed restriction and the lease.
Okay, I I misunderstood that piece in the past. I thought it was just general Dover. So thank you. Just a curiosity question.
It's a good question.
I got it. Hang on a second. Okay. Now. Where are we?
So the hearing has been closed for lot three. We still have lot two hearing open.
And we come to item. And you can draft a decision on the site plan. But E, now we come to special permit twenty twenty dash one. Uh, no, twenty special permit twenty twenty dash six on lot two at eighty Snow Road.
Mr. Chairman, I would, again, this is James Tatro from Thompson Listen Associates, representing the applicant in this case, one six three LLC. The applicant for a special permit and site plan approval on lot two. And all, excuse me, all the same information basically in regard to what has been reviewed by your peer reviewer goes for lot two as it as it as it did for lot three. And I just want to briefly touch upon the conditions suggested in in the zoning by law under section one point five five for the granting of special permits. I I believe that the applicant's application for special permit meets these. I just just very briefly, I'll I'll try to run through as quickly as I can. One point five five A talks about the ingress and egress to the property. Specifically, in this case, we looked very explicitly at the the site distance issue, which was again reviewed by the peer reviewer, and we've agreed to extra conditions in regard to the site distance improvement work being done right away and that being confirmed to the satisfaction of the board. Item B is in regard to off street parking and and as part of the peer reviewers last review, he actually specifically requested us showing extra parking space on both of these lots for cars because there were proposed duplex lots. Item C is in regard to refuse collection, which is I think this is really more of a an issue of if it's a commercial use. Item D, screening and buffering. I would note that in response early on to the abutter Pusil's sort of complaint in regard to visibility, we agreed to install an eight foot high stockade fence along the south boundary of his property. And the proposed duplex will meet all the normal setback requirements and and will not exceed the the height requirement. And in and to take it one step further, the location where this is proposed is is I know there was mention at the in the last item about quote towering over other neighbors. Actually, this location is lower than all of the surrounding neighbors' land. Mr. Pusil is his house sits about six feet and change higher than the land than the what will be the first floor of this house. The next to butter up sits, let's see, fifty six to thirty four is is actually twenty feet higher. So I don't think that when we've proposed to give the abutter who expresses a concern about this issue, this issue of fence at the boundary line and where this property is lower than all than all the abutters and where we're not exceeding the height requirement. I I think it's a fair statement for the applicant to make that screening and buffering is is reasonable. The next item on the list, one point five five E is in regard to signs. And again, I think this is a more really applicable to a commercial use. One point five five F is in regard to required yards and other open space. And as I say, we are proposing to meet all the zoning setback requirements. Item G says general compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. And I would suggest to the board that if you want to read that a duplex is not does not satisfy general compatibility in a residential district with other uses, then that's I would suggest humbly that that's too too close of a reading of of the word general such that it would really only allow the same use. So I I would suggest that the duplex duplex use in a neighborhood of of largely single family homes, but within quarter mile, a couple of other duplexes with a variety of home and lot sizes where the duplex units would end up being sold for approximately the same as as some of the surrounding houses, that this is not incompatible. It is also a residential use. And the next items, one point five five H is in regard to water supply that the use would not have a significant negative effect. Again, this is certainly not a development of such scale as to bring that into question. One point five five I is in regard to if you're in a water protection, water supply protection overlay district, which which this is not. One point five five J is in regard to that any important historic or cultural or the scenic landscape values are preserved. And I don't I don't think those are applicable in this case. So when you just as a quick run through those suggested criteria, I think the application can reasonably say that that it meets all of them. Again, the only one where I think there's some subjectivity is in regard to to general compatibility, and that is the the exact phrasing in the language I have it right in front of me, general compatibility with adjacent properties. And I would humbly suggest that if a duplex cannot be constructed in this district, that a duplex does not meet the criteria of general compatibility, then there really is nothing else that can be constructed in the district. And I don't think that was the intent. I don't think it was ordered as general compatibility if that was the intent. But it is for the for the board to decide.
That's the central point that I'm concerned with. If if you're arguing that it's a question of compatibility with the general zoning district, then it's already, you know, it there's no need. There's no need for it to be a special permit with discretion. I think you mentioned.
But that is what the what the the exact phrasing says, general compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district.
Adjacent properties, adjacent.
And other property and other property in the district. It does not limit it to your immediate abutters. It does not say.
Well, okay, I I hear you. I hear you. It's my concern. And we'll talk about how we get to that. Because I think I I think this is the first time I've ever seen so much input from adjacent and nearby properties on this point. So we're going to have I'm going to have to be thinking about it. I don't know about any other board members, but there we are on that one for now. We'll have to.
And I and I will I will leave it. I will try and take any questions if there are any. But again, I I just to briefly summarize, I I think we've addressed the the site plan issues. And I think the I think the application satisfies the criteria for special permit.
From my seat to ask, would you say there are, you know, not necessarily immediate neighbors, but things that in the in the district, what what streets and what particular numbers, if you know of any properties offhand, that you are imagining as compatible with this? When you're saying close by?
Well, first of all, there's there's there are a variety of of houses within within fifteen hundred feet of of different kinds of houses. And again, the language in the by law says the district. And there are you drive by one duplex on East Street, and I think there was another one that was also not too far away. Again, I I I think it is not an unreasonable interpretation by the applicant to say that that the way that the by law is worded supports his application.
I I hear you. I think at least from from my seat, kind of similar to Bob, is knowing specifically what you are you as the applicant are describing as in the district as comparable properties to what this is. That would help at least form in, you know, opinion, you know, in terms of the discussion that comes along with this. And I I was, you know, interested in those particular points you may have had for.
Sure. I I mean, you have a variety. You know, you go just a little further north on Snow Road and you have lots that are actually, you know, quite a bit smaller, point two two acres, point two six acres, point two seven acres, point one nine, point one eight. You have, again, there's a duplex along East Street. You have some larger homes in the area, more modest, some with more land. Again, as it just showing some with less, you look on Linda Circuit, you again, you see a whole string of of homes in a row that and also on K Circle that are, you know, point two one acres, point two one, point two one, point two. I'm I'm reading off the USGS map. Point two two. Point two two, point two two. I mean, there are there's a variety of sizes of lots and homes in the area. You know, I looked up at the applicants. I asked the applicant, I said, you know, in looking at one of the comments from one of the abutters about saying this would be, you know, somehow incompatible, I I looked up what the tax assessor was was saying, the, you know, value of of some of the homes in the area was. And I said, well, what are you intending to sell these for? And he said, well, about that or somewhere in that same area. I mean, it would not be inconsistent value wise with these existing homes.
We're going to have to talk about this when we come to decision time. I'll point out, you said and adjacent properties and that's a binary and that's that's an you need both. Just because you have one doesn't give you both. Adjacent properties and because the petition that we have and and the inputs we have from the local folks seem to be adjacent properties and they seem to address and they seem to assert that it's not compatible. If that half of it fails, the test fails.
I I would humbly suggest that if if that's the way it's to be interpreted, then no one can do anything but what abuts them.
No, it's it's a discretion. Planning boards have a lot of discretion. And in this case, the town gave the planning board relies on the town relies on the planning board to exercise discretion in this point.
Well, I.
I don't know how we'll come up, but I don't want to spend another hour on it tonight.
Understand.
And we could very easily do that, except that we only have fifteen more minutes on our before we have to extend the meeting.
Might I suggest that unless there is more input to be received on this, that it might be time for us to close the public hearing and plan our deliberations on this at the next meeting. And those deliberations will probably take a fair amount of time discussing this particular point. I have a number of thoughts and questions about the concept of compatibility, which I'm not. I don't think we want to take the time to discuss it tonight.
So just fairly quickly, I I'm not sure exactly where the the board is going on this, but in terms of closing the hearing, we do still have a number of comments from the public tonight that the board may want to consider. And in terms of compatibility, if my recommendation is that that discussion should be held during a public hearing. So I'm not sure if we should.
We we should discuss it in public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. So I I mean, I think that, you know, there's a potential if we're discussing the general compatibility with the neighborhood. That may not necessarily be new information, but I mean, the the discussion, it may be be better to keep it in in a in a public hearing format and in case new information is going to be submitted to that regard.
Does anyone want to do any discussing? Doesn't seem to be anybody who wants to do discussing. Oh, you turn that if they can't see.
Well, let me just throw out one thought here. Thinking about compatibility and how a duplex might be considered incompatible or not. Suppose you took and built a house, a single family home, the exact same size, design and configuration of the proposed duplex here. All the way down to you could build a single family home with two doors, two separate garages. You could even have the same number of people living in it that might be living in a duplex. Now, you could do that just by getting a building permit, provided you've complied with zoning. And you would presumably consider that compatible with the neighborhood. So how is it that a building that is separated into two living units is incompatible in a neighborhood where the exact same building as a single unit will be compatible? What is the difference that makes it incompatible? I don't know the answer to that. I have a fear that the answer to that has to do with who might be living in the duplex. And I'm presuming nobody's thinking in terms of discriminating against the type of people who might live in this neighborhood.
We we do have duplexes in town, and I'm not sure that there's any thing different about people living in them from anybody else. I don't think that's entering into this at all. At least I hope not. It's just and and there are duplexes, for instance, there are duplexes on North Street. They're very old, actually. Yes, there are.
So what is it that makes a duplex incompatible when an identical building that is not a duplex would be considered compatible? I don't know the answer to that. And I don't know if I can figure out an answer to that tonight.
Tonight.
Yeah, but we'll have to each of us decide when we come to a vote. We'll be voting on one point five point five G, right?
Yep, that seems to be the crux of the matter.
Right.
And we need to understand to we 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 have to have some way of coming to coming to a a position in that is this or is this not compatible? Well, what's the basis for considering it to be incompatible? That's what I want to know. And I haven't been able to think of one yet.
Well, something like twenty or thirty people signed a petition that said they felt it was. I'm not sure whether it explained why.
I mean.
Somehow I'm not sure compatibility is up to a vote of the neighborhood.
I mean, I I think I there's some input I could give on on that. I mean, I, I think I, there's some input I could give on, on that discussion. Um, but I, it's not gonna be ten minutes. I think it would be much longer, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, anyway, anyway, the question is there. Um, are we gonna make any progress by talking about it more tonight? Okay, but let's finish talking about it then. Uh, Chris, can you, can you go through the, the, these next things and see if.
Yep.
Is anything?
So Andrew Burton asks, what about fences for all abutters?
I would just note that all of the other abutters besides Mr. Pusil are even more well above this property. For instance, the uh, the, the nearest abutter on Tracy Anne Drive, that home is at elevation three forty-six at the backyard and that's uh, twelve feet higher than the, the area of the, than the first floor on Lot Three, for instance. And again, the, the next abutter past Mr. Pusil on Greenie Drive, his, his home is up at elevation three fifty-six, again versus a, a, uh, an elevation around three thirty. He's, he's around twenty feet higher than this. So a fence would just be something to see over uh, for, for these other abutters.
Um, so the next comment is Greg for Greenie Drive. How will the board evaluate if these lots and lot plans are appropriate, a fit for this neighborhood? Uh, this is the overall key issue and a concern of thirty-three residents. Is this part of what the board will be considering as they make the vote? I think that's been answered quite thoroughly tonight. Unless the board feels otherwise. Um, the complexity of this dual duplex proposals unrivaled in the area, size of lots, Dover driveways, traffic concerns, et cetera. The next comment is Richard Sullivan. Notwithstanding the duplex on Lot Three, which hasn't been built yet, there are only three duplexes within a square mile of this neighborhood and none within sight of this neighborhood. Rather than varying sizes of homes and lots, it comes down to multifamily versus single-family homes, which tend to attract two very different buyers. Again, if it meets general compatibility with surrounding homes, why does it require a special permit?
Are, are these comments going in our, in our record?
They do, they, they show up on, um, I believe on the, the video as well as the record. And then uh, Craig, again, uh, this is where both lots need to be considered together as they increase the volume by four times.
Increase of what? Consider together as the, the volume of.
Presumably dwelling units. So it's four, four additional dwellings.
In, in that regard, I would just note that actually both of these lots are quite a bit larger than most of the surround, the surrounding lots. And the idea that you simply can say, okay, there's two, two units there, therefore it's twice as dense. Well, no, not, not necessarily if it's, if they're larger properties.
Okay.
I just will make the one comment, Bob, from my seat, as it kinda was mentioned by Dave already, is that I don't think any of us at least are considering the type of person buying the property, or buying a dwelling unit, so to speak, as a thing that makes it different for the compatibility of the neighborhood. And I, I think that was worth just calling out there.
Yeah.
Discrimination.
Dave, I take offense at the suggestion that I am or any of, or any of our others are. Is that okay?
That's why I said I trust that we're not taking that into consideration. Maybe I didn't use the word trust, but I'm, I'm surely not, don't wanna suggest that any of us are taking that into consideration.
Particularly at this point in time in history.
And, and I will, I will agree that I did not take Dave's comment as saying any of us were more just for the general public that that's not a consideration we're doing.
Well, by the time we get off of here, uh, Facebook is gonna be full of comments. Um, as we know, every night, there's, there's a, something on Facebook that goes out of control for Grafton, uh, and rather not have it there. Linda, are you about due to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I better. Uh, I move that we vote to extend the meeting beyond ten o'clock deadline.
Second.
Against. Moved and seconded uh, by uh, Justin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. David?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Prabhu?
Nah.
I, I vote I. Motion carries, four to one. Um, all right, moving right along. Um.
Sort of.
Doing my best.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I.
I haven't had a full dinner yet tonight.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, um, I mean, I think there is a lot of discussion that has happened, a lot of discussion that still may need to happen. And um, perhaps I'd suggest that um, myself and the applicant can kinda discuss uh, in further detail offline about um, some of this question of compatibility with the neighborhood and come up with a recommendation uh, for the board.
Well, then you would like us not to close the hearing tonight.
Yeah, so that was uh, previously my indication that I, I think this discussion, um, especially with the concerns of the neighborhood, um, that as we move through this discussion of compatibility, there's, there may be more um, input to be received.
Okay.
If that is the sentiment of the board, then Mr. Chairman, then the applicant would request a continuance to your next meeting.
Um, okay. First, I wanna know whether there's anything else that we need to do tonight. Okay, um, do we have a motion on, on the request?
I will move that the board grant the applicant's written request to be submitted promptly to continue this hearing to Monday, September tenth, I believe it is, at seven thirty PM.
Second. Fourteenth.
Did I hear?
Second.
A question about.
September, September fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, uh, moved and seconded, it's a right discussion.
No, I had a calendar practically right in front of me. I could have actually looked at it.
Oh, well. Yeah. Uh, no discussion. David?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Prabhu?
Hi.
Barely heard you. Uh, and I vote I. Motion carries, continued till next time.
Thank you.
We got a comment from Greg, I'll just clarify. Um, so we continued the public hearing for um, Lot Two. The public hearing for Lot Three has been closed, but a draft decision has been requested from the board.
For Lot Two?
For Lot Three.
Or Lot Three.
Now, no one would complain if staff began drafting a decision on Lot Two as well.
Except that.
But some of the work could be done.
I, I think that that, well, when Chris thinks he can do that, thing is, I can remember that, that a decision where the conditions weren't met and therefore presumably the request was denied was rather different from one that uh, was approved.
Yes, I'm gonna like.
Sure whether, whether he's, you know, again, no one's telling him he can't work on it.
Yep, that's it. Yeah, the point here would be that there is a portion of the decision that.
Yeah.
Of exhibits and, and findings up to a point at least would be applicable no matter which way the decision ultimately goes. Chris, I'm sure it would be, would not want to go so far as to draft a complete decision only to find out that the board went in a different direction. But we, yes, we have had in the past work on a decision up to a point where it requires some more, more input from the board, board in order to know which direction the decision will go. But like I said before, nothing, we're not gonna complain if Chris does start work on a decision for this.
I'll draft what I can and it'll come with as many highlights as needed to keep myself organized.
Hello, hello. Can anybody hear me?
What's next? I heard you.
Yep.
Hang, hang on, I, my, I gotta.
It's very soft.
Okay, let's try again.
Can you hear us?
Yes, yep.
Yes. Can you hear?
Okay.
My, the computer I was on.
Just went south.
Shut off, I don't know why.
So we'll work from over.
You give both of us.
Hey. Yeah. Do it for the price of one here.
All right.
Hey.
Um, so we just look at that voting. So. Finished with the last hearing and we are back to bills, right?
Correct.
I'll move that we approve the bills and authorize the planner to sign on behalf of the board.
Second. Second, second, second. Can you hear me?
Yes. Moved and seconded, um, discussion. Hearing none.
I didn't actually see any bills.
Yes, there were a bunch of them. Oh, great.
There was an attachment.
Yeah, I think we keep graves in business.
Well, yeah.
Somehow I miss seeing them. No, it's all right.
I think it may have been fairly recent. I'm, I'm running on uh, quarter impulse power over here now instead of my full. Okay, uh, so moved and seconded about the bills.
Yes.
Any discussion? David?
Hi.
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Probably.
Hi.
Me. I. Motion carries. Moving on. Uh, minutes of previous meetings. Did we have one?
I didn't see any.
We may have.
Oh, did we?
I don't believe there were any minutes.
Okay.
I didn't see any.
Not seeing any.
Staff report.
None other than what's on the agenda. No report.
Okay, um, correspondence, anything about correspondence?
I had one, one question, uh, just curious. There is one topic in Shrewsbury that is the, some material adjustment to the cell phone tower. So whenever there's a decision made, I think they are still in deliberation state. So whenever there's a decision made, can we get access to what was the decision? So it could give some precedence as to how it was decided. I, I would assume that would come our way. All these towers do undergo upgrades and changes.
Yep, so we do, we do receive uh, the notice of, uh, similar to, we have to send out um, notice of decisions to surrounding towns. They do send their notice of decisions to us. Um, I don't believe we get the full decision. They um, they may only send out the notice, which is the requirement rather than the full decision. Um, but we do get those and, and I can, if there's a specific decision, just email me and I'm happy to, to pull that up and, and go through it, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Anything else about correspondence? Okay, reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CMRPC. I can report to you about CMRPC's annual meeting. That's when all the delegates and alternates get together and it's generally open for like, we, we could have other members of the board come to it too. Uh, it was scheduled, originally it was scheduled to be held this year at Highfields in Grafton in June. The pandemic pushed that back to a rescheduling in September. Now that's been quote, pushed back to next June. So the annual meeting uh, isn't happening, too bad. But hopefully it'll be at Highfields next June.
We can hope.
And hopefully we can get some of our people out. Okay, anybody else? Reports and whatnot? I don't.
Nothing new from any of the committees I'm on.
Nothing new from the library? They're making progress over there, beginning to look like a building. Sort of.
It is sort of.
Okay, uh, if that's it.
I, I just have one thing to Chris. Uh, for the next meeting, it may help if we have an explanation of what is fully allowed in the zoning in the area of Snow Road. So that everybody understands um, that what the zoning itself, if it, you know, I don't think it's zoned, single-family housing only. And I think that's something that needs to be said and the type of zoning it is.
It's our, either our twenty or our forty, I think with single-family residential.
Hmm, that's something we have to, really has to be said.
And, and that's when, in that, in those zones or in that zone, uh, duplex is allowed by a special permit.
I see.
And then you can just figure out all about special permit and if, if there's any input we can get from, say, Jenny.
You'd be nice.
Be nice, Chris, okay? I think, I think that would be helpful. Okay, is there anything else?
I move adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, not debatable, all in favor? I, no, sorry.
I do it the hard way.
I, I, I get to vote first this time. Um, David?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Listen, Linda?
Hi.
Prabhu?
Hi.
And I already voted I.
Okay.
Thank you, good night.